So at this point, this evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And this meeting is being recorded. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Our first order of business this evening would be the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business would be the election of Board Officers. My dog really wants to participate in this. I apologize for that. So first, I'm going to ask for nominations for Board of Education Chair. And we will be doing a vote by roll call this evening since we are virtual and online so that are recorded properly. Are there nominations for Chair?
I'd like to nominate Andrew Bronnel for Chair.
Thank you, Sue.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any additional nominations for Chair? Okay, hearing none. Is for Andrew Bronnel for Board of Education Chair for the next two years. Andrew Bronnel.
Hi.
Oh, sorry. Chris Davy. I'm gonna call you one at a time if I could, please. Sorry, thank you. Chris Davy. I believe he is absent this evening. Ben Davies. Rhea Klein.
Hi.
Diana Pagano.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Diana, and little faces. Ben Davies, we are voting for Andrew Bronnel for Chair. How would you like to cast your vote, sir?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sue Pike.
Aye.
Thank you, Sue.
Scott Rich.
Aye.
Thank you. Very much. Chair Bronnel, I'm turning it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So now we'll be looking for nominations for Vice Chair. Do you have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Sue Pike for Vice Chair.
You, Ben, do we have a second?
I will second.
Scott, do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call for this. Also, I will vote aye. Sue Pike.
Aye.
Scott Rich.
Aye.
Ben Davies.
Aye.
Diana Pagano.
Hi.
Rhea Klein.
Hi.
And is Chris, I know Chris is traveling. Is he, I don't see him here still. Chris Davy, you're not here, right?
Correct. I think he's, yeah, he's traveling.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're looking for nominations for Board Secretary. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ben Davies for Secretary.
Thank you, Sue. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any other nominations for Board Secretary? Hearing none. I will vote aye. Sue Pike.
Aye.
Scott Rich.
Aye.
Ben Davies.
Aye.
Diana Pagano.
Hi.
And Rhea Klein.
Hi.
Chris Davy, I assume, is still not here.
Hi.
Stop saying hi.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ben. Okay. Now we're moving on. I'll turn things over to Kristen for the celebration of excellence.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations, everybody. Looking forward to our continued work together. It is my tremendous honor tonight to announce to you a great tale about Ms. Megan Minicucci. So Megan, can you give everybody a wave so they can see you? I think, I think they're frozen.
So Megan is with her mom, and she is stepping out of a dress rehearsal to join you tonight. A young lady in costume there for the Christmas show.
There we go, but they look frozen.
Will it show if I unmute myself? I don't know if you could see me now.
Yeah, now I can see you, Meg. There we go. All right. So Megan has overcome three years of illness, injury, COVID-19 restrictions, to finally realize her tremendous running talent. Through hard work represented by hundreds of miles of runs in all kinds of weather conditions, patience and faith in her own abilities through tenacity and through courage, Megan overcame past disappointments to become the greatest female runner in Bolton High School history. Okay, Megan, I'm getting choked up. I'm gonna try to get through this kiddo without getting all weepy. That is awesome. Let's give her a round of applause just for that because that in and of itself is just amazing. After a frustrating season of COVID limitations for junior center sites on making the all-New England championship meet her senior year, it makes, takes tremendous guts to announce a goal that will be difficult to achieve, but even more guts to do the work to realize the goal. Goals are achieved and champions are made in the days, weeks, and months leading up to a race, and not necessarily in the race itself. Megan proved up to the challenge. During the regular season, she won first place at the Wickham Invitation, the first Bolton runner in history to do so. After earning all-conference honors at the NCCC meet by finishing third, she moved on to the Class S State Championship Meet, where she placed second again to earn all-state honors and lead her team to only its second-place finish at the class meet in school history. Four days later, Megan finished ninth in the state open meet. Megan smashed her personal record on the Wickham course by forty. And I'm not a runner, but even I know that's a huge smash, so great job. She was the ninth fastest girl in Connecticut that day and qualified for New England meet the following week in Vermont. She is only the second female runner in all of Bolton history to qualify for the New England meet, and only the third runner, male or female, to ever qualify, period. One week later, in a race of two girls on an extremely difficult, hilly, muddy course, Megan scratched and clawed her way from one-hundred-and-twentieth place at the six-hundred-meter mark of the race to the front of the pack by the end of the race. The course was narrow and dangerous, and Megan had to fight her way past each runner. Girls were falling right and left. Some, according to coach, even ran into trees, which is scary to me. But when she came out of the woods with five-hundred meters to go, Megan was in twentieth place and held on to that spot to earn all-New England honors. She is the first female in Bolton history to ever earn that distinction. She was also the fifth fastest girl in Connecticut that day, moving up from ninth, but just the week before. She ran her best in the biggest race of the year, capping off season and a tremendous career. Megan, all of Bolton and the Bolton Public Schools are extremely proud of you for all your hard work and your great success. Congratulations to you. What a tremendous honor. I know your coach is here tonight, Megan, so maybe before we have you say something, Coach, would you like to share anything?
I'll just say that it's not often you get a runner who has not only the talent, but also the drive, the buy-in, the commitment. And Megan had all those things, and it's, it's just, like I said, a rare privilege to actually have all that come together in an athlete. And I've been doing this a long time, and, you know, it doesn't happen very often. So, you know, I personally, for me, realize how special it is and how awesome and unique she is. So I just congratulate Megan and thank her for her, her tremendous.
One hundred percent. Congratulations, Meg. Meg, would you like to say anything?
I definitely just wanna I definitely just wanna thank, like, all the people involved, and I'm very fortunate to have the Bolton family that I do, between my amazing coaches and my teachers, even down to the office ladies that I see every morning, supporting me through the whole season. Mr. Giard made it out to our state meet. That was awesome. Just thank you to everyone.
Good job, Meg. Congratulations. That was awesome. So next, I would like to share and showcase our awesome Bolton Public Schools K-12, pre-K-12, actually, music program. We have a little something to show you this evening.
Hi, my name is Katie DeRogers. I'm the Music and Arts K-12 Academic Leader here in Bolton. Welcome to our portion of the program this evening. We very much look forward to sharing with you some of what we do in the classroom that supports the growth and development of our students in Bolton through music. We also look forward to the future when you can join us for our music events in person. In addition to serving as the Music and Art Academic Leader, School Band, Percussion, Jazz Band, Music Technology I and II, and Advanced Placement Music Theory.
In AP Music Theory, students study the basic elements and processes of music through multiple perspectives, including visual and oral analysis, composition, performance, and the development of oral skills. Here, students error-detecting performances of their own rhythmic compositions from the end of our Rhythm and Meter Unit.
So close to perfect, just one. I think Colin, you played a four instead of a five, and that's your eighteen, but other than that, it sounded perfect.
The BHS Concert Band meets in three separate periods. Two of them, periods D and A, are only for wind instruments. Percussion has its own class, Period B, to focus on the many instruments percussionists must master in order to play in a band. The three classes combine for full band rehearsals during our concert preparation cycle. It's really exciting to hear the groups come together, to determine our balance, and see what we need to continue to work on as a group. In Music Technology, students learn basic music concepts through the use of digital music technology and computer workstations. They use a DAW or Digital Audio Workstation to create, compose, record, edit, and mix music. This project is a student remix project. The student used portions of a song, editing them to their liking, and then added their own creations to compose a new piece of music using the original.
Hi, my name is Mary Braskus, and I teach General Music, pre-K through eight, and fourth and fifth grade chorus. This is the first year the preschool students are receiving formal music instruction. They have music twice a week for twenty minutes each time. At this young age, we work to both teach and reinforce the most basic music melody beat, echo singing, and gross and fine motor motions using instruments and dance. Kindergarten and first-grade students focus on becoming tuneful, beatful, and artful musicians. Each class, we work on these foundational skills through beat-keeping activities, simple songs and echo songs, and movement exploration. Students also get to explore using different classroom percussion instruments such as wirrows, shakers, wood blocks, sandpaper blocks, and drums. Second and third-grade students build off of their foundational tuneful, beatful, and artful skills and complex musical ideas. Second graders begin our music literacy program, Conversational Soul Fedge, which teaches students how to say, read, and write music in the same way we learn language, through rote learning, echo and repetition, copying to write, and finally creating their own music. Second graders learn about world music during the third trimester. Third graders start to explore two-part music and singing simple harmony, and expand into other music concepts, sus, and folk dancing. Third graders start instrumental instruction during the third trimester, this year for the first time, learning the ukulele. Fourth and fifth-grade chorus students are experiencing large-group singing for the first time since spring of 2020. Students are working on basic vocal technique, including breathing and diction, and working on simple song structures such as unison singing, rounds, and canons. These students also learn a song for the BCS. Seventh and eighth-grade Music Survey allows students to learn about and experience music in a non-performance-based class. Seventh graders learn about the basic elements of music such as rhythm, melody, and harmony, do a study of musical instruments and genres, learn how American music has grown and developed over the past century, musical theater, copyrighted music, music careers, and ukulele in the third trimester. Eighth graders explore wide scale by looking at and listening to music of cultures from Australia, Africa, Asia, and Native America. The second half of the year is spent learning guitar.
Hi, I'm Jason B. I teach band at BCS, grades four through eight.
Hi, my name is Dan, grades six through twelve, choral music and guitar. And I'm excited to share with you what my students have been working on so far this year. Students in middle-school chorus learn vocal technique and musicianship by singing songs from a variety of styles and genres. We transition from unison singing into two-part harmony. Students have opportunities to select music for the chorus to rehearse and perform that matches their interests. As students grow more cognitive skills, we do more a cappella or unaccompanied singing. Students may assume leadership roles as conductors or soloists. In high-school concert choir, students have even more opportunities for self-directed learning and musical development. For this project, called My Music Monday, groups of students created, rehearsed, and performed their own arrangements of popular songs. In this project, each singer had to learn and perform a separate harmony part while a fourth student accompanied on piano. Since we did not prepare a fall or winter concert this year due to COVID, we focused instead on more individual vocal technique and musicianship. Each student in concert choir learned and performed a classical Italian aria during class. The first unit in Guitar Performance I is Rhythm Guitar. Students learn to play fourteen open-position chords, and they applied their skills in this final project in which every student composed an original instrumental song and taught it to the rest of the class. Music Department, thank you to the Board of Education and the community for all of your continued support. We can't wait to share more music with you soon.
That was great. Thank you very much for that comprehensive look. That was wonderful. K-12 music program and our amazing staff and students and their talents. And now we just have a brief video shared by Bolton Center School. Mr. Giard announced the last meeting that the PTA had raised over sixteen thousand dollars for the Walk-a-thon. And we have a brief little video to share to celebrate that tonight.
This is our Walk-a-thon. It's sponsored by the PTA. Tremendous event.
Great parent turnout. There's parents all along the course.
Clearly, I've clicked something wrong. Please stand by.
Yeah, no problem.
This is our annual This is our annual BCS Walk-a-thon. It's sponsored by the PTA. Tremendous event.
Great parent turnout. There's parents all along the course cheering on the kids, which is super fun.
I think as of right now, we're close to ten thousand dollars raised, with more pledges coming in today and over the weekend. So parents have been awesome, very generous, always supporting the school, the PTA. Thank you. Exciting event. I'm gonna do some walking, some cheering, some dancing, so we're gonna
I think it's great that we can get them outside and get them some fresh air. You know, get some of their energy out so they can sit down and focus later on in the day. But I also love that Apex comes in and does, you know, a lot of like how to be a good leader.
They came and they met with each class on a daily basis for the two weeks leading up. And they talked to the students about some characteristics of becoming a leader, how to aspire for something, how to be a self-starter, how to own it, how to have a new day and have a new positive outlook. So it's been a up, building up these leadership characteristics, and today is the culminating activity with the walk.
I'm having a great time. I love about it that we get to walk and have fun.
Also, we get to play fun games while we're on the way.
I like everything about it. I love everything!
Thank you to Mr. Giard and Miss Safran, who really were the driving force behind all of this. You know, and the Apex Company as well, just do so much with this that we could not possibly do on our own. So huge thank you to everyone, the teachers, for sharing the information and the classes and, you know, and all, everything. The parents who donated, wouldn't be the same day without them, so.
Again, we wanna thank our PTA, our parents, for their tremendous support, and to Mr. Giard and Miss Safran and our staff and all our students for all the great work. It's a huge success. It was, it was a great day. Yep, I see some little faces nodding. It was a good day that day. Yes, it was. All right, that concludes our celebration of excellence tonight.
Well, thank you. All that was just wildly entertaining for my daughters. They got to see themselves and their teachers, and it was just very wonderful. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. Moving on to comments from the audi- the audience members out there this evening who would like to make a comment. I am hearing nothing, so we will move on. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Onto routine Onto routine business, the approval of minutes. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11th, Board of Education Regular Business Meeting.
No move, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Scott. Is there any questions or edits or comments about these minutes? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Would have any abstentions? Okay, that passes. Moving on to committee reports, the BCS Temporary Building Committee.
We met on November 18th. And it was follow-up to receiving the HVAC engineers' reports. We had requested some additional information and clarifying information. So they had included some cost estimates for each of the options that were described briefly at the last Board of Education meeting. The conversations kind of, you know, we spent some time talking down to the fact that there's a lot of highly technical detail that comes with these options as you discuss the pros and cons of the of the ventilation and potential for introducing air conditioning. So there, it was requested that a meeting be set up with the engineers to do a presentation, kind of review the information in person with both the the building committee as well as with the Board of Selectmen, as this will be likely something, an item that goes on the. I do not know where that stands, if a meeting has been scheduled or not at this moment.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was with the Capitol Committee or was it the Board of Selectmen? It was my understanding.
Oh, you're right. You're right. It would be with the Capex. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Correct. And no meeting has been scheduled yet, although I did talk to Pam Sawyer and I know that her office reached out to find out who was on CAPA. So I would anticipate that likely we'll be seeing some potential dates hopefully next week.
Has anyone contacted the engineers about?
We have contacted the engineers and they're willing to participate. We just, they're on hold till we have a date for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Also, Buildings and Grounds.
So we, we also met that same November 18th. And at this meeting, John Bitnovich kind of gave an update on the activities at the schools. He, he reported that the custodians continue to be very busy keeping up with COVID requirements, cleaning and disinfecting routinely, paying attention to the high touchpoints and maintaining the ventilation systems so that they're operating as recommended. The, there have been some contractors have been out to prevent, to do some preventative maintenance on the ventilation systems and controls, I believe that's at the high school. The temporary air conditioning at UCS was used in September and October. It helped, wasn't perfect, but it did help make things a little more comfortable. There were some security system related items discussed. There's a new server at the security camera system. At the Center School, the server was replaced for the door access system. And in general, the monitoring of the alarms has been switched from Talon County to Johnson Controls for the, for the district. And then the final report was that moving contractors have been out to inspect the roofs and make necessary repairs. And we did learn that the warranty was extended again, so that we can remain under warranty as we try to get, work our way toward a project for the building.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Scott. Moving on to Curriculum Committee.
Okay, Curriculum Committee met this past Tuesday. And we had a great presentation of a new, of several US history textbooks that they were looking at. One was deemed to be superior to the others. Unfortunately, due to some technical glitches, we weren't able to view it that day. I was able to look at it today with Sarah and I was really impressed with what was offered. And the presentation was really well done, so. Good. Forward as a first read tonight.
Thank you very much. You are correct about that. Moving on to Finance Committee. Finance Committee met yesterday. It was just me on phone. And I believe we have some reclassifications and the transfer to discuss. Do we have that? Kristen, could you go over these? Possible? No, okay.
Sorry, yeah, I'm here.
Do you want to?
Yes, I do. Sorry, I got shut off my computer. Sorry about that. So we have some transfers. First one was a reclass for interpreter services for a meeting. An increase in, next one was a reclass, increase in periodical subscription costs. Then we had a reclass to purchase parts. And lot, light repairs, the red trucks, disc brakes, snow blower repair, tractor tire repair at Bolton Center School. Again, a reclass for Bolton High School for repairs, for roofing, for the green truck exhaust manifold and brake parts and repairs. A reclass to cover the cost of vacuum belts. Some additional monies to cover the cost of Chicago Teen Edition for this year's play events at the high school. We needed to purchase parts for the tractor and snow blowers. We had a reclass there. Again, reclass to purchase parts for the truck at Bolton Center School. We needed to purchase cups for both schools. We needed some money for instructional supplies for music that came in much higher than budgeted, which we are starting to switch. Pretty sure if anybody goes to store, you know that prices are up no matter what you buy. A reclass to cover shortfall in capital reserves for the HVAC controllers. Again, that was also a factor of, you know, we had budgeted that last January and there have been a lot of pricing changes since then. So we needed to take care of that. And to cover the Commons visual lighting project and the last couple professional development being offered by Great School Partnership out of New England. New Hampshire specifically, we've been working with them for, I don't know, five or six years now. And again, an additional reclass for an interpreter for a parent teacher conference. So that parents are hearing it in the language they need to hear it in. So I believe that ends the transfers for last month. So if we could start Chair O'Neill with a motion regarding those transfers. And then I have some additional to talk about in the finance report update as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers from last month.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
This is Sue's second.
Thank you, Sue.
Do we have any questions, comments or questions about any of the qualifications? The big one was the HVAC controllers that's still up on the screen. That's what we discussed last month and had.
I think Ria has a question.
Okay.
You're on mute, Ria.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question. A lot of money was transferred from electricity. Can you just explain that?
So we are locked in for some electricity pricing through. So we believe that based on our usage that we have some savings there in that. And so that is where we're able, and I think, you know, we talked about that a little bit last month too, when the board made that transfer for that large amount due to the saving.
So it's quite a bit then. I mean, it seems like it's quite a bit.
It is. Well, I mean, I think, you know, if you look at your electric bills, right, they're going up. Price.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, that was discussed somewhat a little bit last month. And I had asked that we, you know, are we sure we're not going to run out of money for electricity? And that was the case, so. That is the big ticket item. And there's a few smaller ones which also stated in John's budget to infrastructure problems, so. Is there comments about these? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone would like to abstain? That passes. Onto the next.
Mr. Mislai, if we could show the next page, that would be great. Thank you. So we are at this point anticipating full funding, full expenditure in regular education. Next page, please. I want to call your attention specifically to that $51,890. We are not projecting at this point this year, based on our students' needs who are placed, any excess cost reimbursement. We don't have any students who at this point are going to exceed the current state projected threshold of $88,000, I believe it is, $507. So we have actualized that at this point. And I just, you know, want to remind the board that special education is an ever-changing landscape. And then administration's important. We're still projecting full expenditure there at this point in time. And then lastly, at this point, we are actualizing $80,000 of savings in insurance changes from life events and new hires electing lower coverage. So we also, in that, I want to talk about an issue that we're having with failing teacher Chromebooks. This came this week, we continue to have problems. And they are becoming more and more widespread. And I am concerned that our teachers don't have in their hands what they need. We've had a number of quarantines as a result of COVID in the last several weeks. And should for any reason, any classroom need to go remote, I want to make sure that they have what what they need in their hands to be able to do so. So I am requesting a transfer of $30,800 from benefits to fund the replacement of these failing teacher Chromebooks. We, Sarah did a great job of getting quotes and we actually have a vendor that has exactly what we need, the 88 that we need in stock right now. So I'm hoping that you approve this transfer so that we can order them tomorrow. Don't have to wait nine months for them like we did the last time we tried to order Chromebooks.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve that transfer.
Thank you, Ben.
A second.
Thank you, Ria.
Thank you, Ben and Ria. Do we have any questions or comments about the transfer of actualized salary monies for Chromebooks or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone who's opposed? Or abstaining? Go forth and buy Chromebooks.
Mrs. Malinowski, tomorrow morning. Let's get that out, order out. Thank you, everybody, very much. And on behalf of the teachers, thank you. Okay, that concludes our finance report. Thank you.
That's all for finance. And last committee report is Personnel, the Personnel Committee met this afternoon. We are in off-the-record negotiations with the administrative assistants and the ping generally good progress. And hopefully we can have something to bring forward to the board next month. And that brings us to the BHS Student Representative Reports.
The seniors were to complete their project portion of the capstone. And we also started to apply to colleges of our choice. And some of us are even receiving our offers. When winter sports started, boys finished tryouts and they're starting to prepare for their first game, which is on the 16th against East Granby at home. Girls' basketball team has welcomed a new coaching staff and we're very excited to see what the season has in store. And their first game is on the 14th away at Stafford. Indoor track also started and they're starting to work on strength and conditioning as well as their individual events. And their first meet is on December 18th.
So the ice hockey team is game against Newington soon. And I'm glad to congratulate Silas Gorley on being accepted into the Eastern Regionals Jazz Band, which has very few performers, so it's a great honor for him. Band is also scheduled to have their first catch in a while after winter break on January 5th. And we will have a full band rehearsal on the 3rd.
Great. Thank you both of you very much. And Mike, you guys are welcome. Things, it's all good. Thank you.
So, so for clarification, they're here. So Emily was here for basketball and Michael was here for jazz band. So they have parked themselves in the hallway patiently waiting. So it's not optional. Go home.
Yes, good night, guys. Thank you.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. Okay. Committee meeting reports. So we, we meetings, anyone has attended. I know we don't do correct or haven't had CAPA and we don't have a PTA person right now, so. I think that's a no. Turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of school report.
Great, thank you very much. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you in person K-12 music academic leader Katie DeRosa this evening to share information further about our Bolton Music Program. Katie, turn it over to you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks. Excuse me, I'm just gonna close the door because they're making noise.
As I said, jazz band practice is right now.
All right, all right, I'm back. So thank you so much for having us. And Mr. Air, gosh, Mr. Mislai, if you can please, that would be great. I just want to take a moment to, oh, and go to the next slide for me. Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to share, Mrs. Hecht and the board for allowing us to put that video together. Just if anyone had any questions, but before even that, thank you to my colleagues, Mary Dimbras, yes, I think she's still here, Dan Air and Jason Beat. Jason Beat wasn't able to join us. His son has his first band concert tonight. Very exciting. Thank you to them for putting videoing and editing their own clips. And then Darren Air graciously compiled all of those clips together in that amazing video. So I want to give a special shout out to him for all of that work that he's amazing. They're all amazing, but thank you to them. And did anyone have any questions on anything they saw in the video? Okay, then I'm ready for the next slide, Mr. Mislai. So Mrs. Hecht asked us in part to present some of our COVID-19 challenges to you, just so you would be aware if you were not already. And so in reflection upon this, really, we discovered that all of our challenges, we really viewed them as opportunities. Um, and so in reflection upon this, uh, really, I, we discovered that all of our challenges, um, we really viewed them as opportunities. And I think that speaks to probably all educators, but I can definitely speak for our team of music educators here in Bolton. So I wanted to give you, um, just a up. Severe safety restrictions clearly at the start of the pandemic. Um, we're talking, we were not able to do a lot of our curriculum whatsoever, we were not able to play our instruments, we were not able to sing until we got the the right stuff and the spacing. Uh, was over twelve feet apart, um, in addition to masking while playing, um, and our bell covers which have Merv thirteen in them. So um, safety really impacted us and continues to impact. In the pandemic, we were not able to execute significant portions of our curriculum. But we pivoted and as a result, really, I think we created some new opportunities through our own reflection and creativity. So for example, um, we have a new ukulele curriculum that Mrs. Dembraskis mentioned in her video that's being implemented in third grade. We have an additional focus and emphasis on creating in the class. Reserved only for performing, so really incorporating more of our national core art standards in that. Um, and we've taken a shift in some of our music technology curriculum, uh, I think for the better of um. Accessing more students and what they're interested in and in this, uh, these changes were really. Because we had to pivot, um, we found these new opportunities. Regardless of all that, though, our performance-based classes. It and continue to take a hit because of the safety restrictions, the bottom line is the technology is not yet good enough to make music in any sort of virtual fashion together. It's just pretty frustrating, um, and our spacing and masking requirements forced us to restructure and reschedule classes, cancel our live performances. And they continue to play a role in our current choices, um, I want to briefly um, highlight the work that our administrators did, um, who. They bent over backwards to reschedule the building in some cases over at the center school for us, we had to split up our classes. Because we couldn't fit all of our students in our locations, um, both buildings found us new locations to perform in. Um, and along the way, they included us in the decisions. And that was not the case in many other districts and. Their time in seeking us out showed us yet again that um, you value our. Want to say thank you um, again for that and I cannot. Tell you how much that has helped us continue when things have been challenged, just that feeling that we are valued. Um, so we still, despite all that, we couldn't perform together in in the normal way, you know, we were teaching additional sections, we couldn't have instrumental lessons, blah, blah, blah. So we did some virtual performances, we explored outdoor performances, um, and we provided great opportunities. Time for some of our students, it's just not what they signed up for, so we believe these factors contributed to a lower participation. Participation rate in our, in our current high school groups. Um, you know, some students chose other activities during the pandemic because that's what worked and it translated better. Um, some weren't able to schedule perhaps, yet others aren't. Aren't participating for whatever a variety of reasons and, you know, that's not just in music, that's in sports nationwide, right, there are a lot of. Lot of things going on, whether kids are working or social. What's going on, but we are excited, we're building back, as you saw in those videos, our middle school groups are um, strong. And you could hear the progression in their performances, so um, we, we know that we will um, build back and and I just want to fat. Uh, speak to the fact that our team is very strong, so um, the music teachers here are um, just great professionals and colleagues and um. Despite the difficulties, we're, we're pushing on forward and, you know, we're excited about. So that's that, um, I, oh, and I should say as part of that, I think Michael, did Michael and Emily tell you that we have a concert coming up? Hopefully, if, you know, the world doesn't crash on us again, did they mention that? Okay, super excited, I got some head nods, so we're excited, um, January fifth and uh, things are starting to happen again. Uh, Mrs. Hecht also asked me to speak towards our instrument replacement cycle, um, so uh, fortunately. Been able to do in the past is try to look out forward for budgeting purposes, what is the district going to needs in terms of instruments because they are, or they tend to be. Um, more expensive purchases and typically this is a three-year plan that outlines our priorities. I am, but however, right now, we're only focused on twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, just really, we, we don't feel responsible to do more than that because we. Are in this build backstage and every year we. Enrollment in what students we have to determine those needs. Um, but the plan does exist and it's for both BCA, BCS and BHS and Mr. Maselli, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So here is our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three requests at the center school. In fourth grade, all students are doing band and chorus, um, during that year and as a result, in the past few years, we've been uh really handing out as many. We can to reduce the financial burden and what we're finding, the financial burden is increasing and we just have students who need more instruments. So we're looking for two student trumpets and two, um, a student trombone and Mrs. Hecht just let us know that. Fortunately, we're able to purchase these now because we need them now to get them in the hands of students. Um, and for the high school, um, we believe that we're going to be looking for a bigger purchase of a Barry sax, um, a Barry sax is. Phone that they rent, um, and uh, we have two currently, but right now I have three players, we're actually borrowing one right now and. Because personnel shifts, we're waiting on that decision, um, but that might be a purchase in the future. Does anyone have any questions about those instruments? All right, Mr. Maselli, the next slide, please, that was it. We're so grateful. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Katie, thank you very much, uh, we are very blessed, uh. He, as the board knows, right, we have been on this journey, this COVID journey together for the, I hate to say it almost out loud, almost two years now. And uh. You know, it certainly has impacted our students and staff continuously all over the place. I think one of the greatest impacts we have seen has been. So the requirements of the spacing and schools are only so small and our, you know, all of our teachers have had to pivot, all of our teachers have had to think outside the box. But music has had to think outside the box and then go to another box and think outside of that one and then another one after that, so I I want to give kudos to Katie. And to Dan and to Mary and um, to Jason for just an absolutely, oh. Outstanding job. Uh, really well done. Any questions for Katie or the music department?
Well.
No, just to thank you and congratulations, you guys are awesome, that's a lot.
Thank you, we are, um, again, really grateful, um, to the administrators and the town in general. Um, and Mrs. Dembraskis is there and we, um, as Dan mentioned in our video, we are so looking forward to. Building back and getting back to what we love to do and what the students are in our programs for and to have you join us in person, we're, we're really excited for that.
Me too. Thank you guys very much, appreciate it, great job on the videos and showcasing the great work that our students and that you all do, thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn it over uh to Mr. Maselli and Mr. GR to provide an athletics update.
Thank you, Katie, you guys make it easy for us to make those decisions, Joe's come with solutions and and I just want to say thank you to the music department, it's greatly appreciated. Um, for this athletics update, Mr. Maselli and I are going to be presenting you with an athletics update, we worked with Mr. Hummiston who had another commitment tonight, he's our athletic director. To prepare, prepare tonight's presentation. This first slide here is fall sports participation for BCS and you can see the numbers, boys cross country. Girls cross country thirteen, uh, boys and girls soccer for a total of thirty-four percent. Um, is the percentage of athletes to the student population for grades six through eight because sports at the center school are offered to students in grades six through eight. And in the winter season which we're in now, which, uh, I saw the basketball team practicing on the way out, they are very excited to be back, um, in normal form. And the boys team has eighteen players and the girls team has eighteen players, they've just finished tryouts and that makes up. And population for grades six through eight and that first game is coming up very soon against Vernon, who is always a very tough opponent.
Uh, taking a look at the high school numbers, uh, here, uh, cross country always big, uh, with thirteen students and eleven students. Our football team is a co-op program, we'll talk about a little bit more about that in a minute. Uh, with seven of our students joining students from other schools for that, uh, twenty-nine and twenty-six soccer players, uh, which is, which was. Um, the team of one, uh, when we have students who want to swim or dive or do gymnastics. Uh, we have an arrangement with various other schools so they can participate there, those kind of facilities, uh, aren't something we have in Bolton, so we, you know, we could not host a diving or a swimming team. Uh, but we make arrangements through C I A C regulations for them to be a team of one, which is a little misnomer, uh, for example, gymnastics, we have a team of one with two. Uh, girls on it, right, so team of one isn't literally one student, uh, seventeen stu. Ball, and if you look at the student population grades nine through twelve, forty-one percent of Bolton High School students participated in uh, fall sports. Taking a peek at the uh, winter, uh, large boys basketball team of twenty-four, a small but strong, uh, girls basketball team of nine. There's that team of one with two gymnasts, uh, attached to South Windsor, uh, ice hockey is our second co-op group. Uh, Bolton Coventry Rockville, uh. Four players this year and our indoor track, um. Just like our outdoor track, even though we don't have a track indoors or outdoors, uh, we have huge numbers, twenty-two and seventeen, so again, thirty-one percent of Bolton High School students. Participating in our winter sports that are taking place right now. Um, so you know, here are the guidelines, uh, for cooperative teams, there's a lot to this, uh, Mr. Hummiston has to examine this every year. You know, when you don't have enough players, football, hockey. And team, or you don't have facilities, we don't have a football field. You can combine with other schools and it's something that actually has to be reviewed annually through these strict C I A C uh, regulations that are up there on the board. Um, it's based on numbers, it's based on on uh, competition, there's a no-cut policy and currently, um, you know, we continue with our. Uh, Coventry, Wynton, Bolton, Lebanon football team, Coventry is currently the host school for that, uh, B C. He, um, that is currently hosted by Rockville, we have been the host school in the past when we've had the largest number of players. Uh, back several years ago and knew this spring, uh, we only had a few, uh, boys for tennis and so instead of saying there's no tennis. Uh, Mr. Hummiston was that, was able to reach out to Rockville again and create a brand-new co-op that's just actually just getting approved kind of as we speak. For spring of twenty-two, so our boys have an opportunity to play tennis and I think what we'll do with that, because we do have some nice tennis courts. Oh, have that team, even though we're not the host school, we will have, uh, you know, a match or two take place here as well. So we are headed into uh, winter with a C I A C and they have said that starting on. December twenty-third, so the first day of uh, winter recess, the rules are changing for athletes, so um. Masks are on at all times for all athletes until the twenty-third. Third, students who have document or athletes who have documented, uh, their vaccination status are eligible to remove their masks during active play. Not during practice, not wine sidelines, certainly not on the bus and those kinds of things. Uh, so the details are there, if anybody's really interested, I can certainly have, you know, Mrs. Hecht and I can send those out to you, there's, there's actually quite a lot of language in there from the C I A C. Uh, but the bottom line is masks unless you're vaccinated, um, and that's. Following, uh, as all the other N triple C schools will be doing, we're following those C I A C guidelines, they vary a little bit sport to sport. Um, but that is the direction that we are heading.
Um, here you can see outline the BCS and BHS protocols at events, so athletes are using locker rooms, uh, this winter season. Spectators must wear a mask at all times inside BCS and BHS and spectators, like I said, are allowed, but. Um, in those gymnasiums.
Any questions about athletics? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on, uh, to uh, the schools update. Uh, before we get to BCS, though, I'd like to introduce, uh, Director of H R and Student Support Services Beth Gold Snyder, she's going to share some information with. Things, uh, at both BCS and BHS particularly in light of uh, recent events in our schools, both in our country and in Connecticut, Mrs. Gold Snyder.
Great, thank you and thank you for doing that little intro for me, so that kind of. Doesn't make me have to go over why we're doing this presentation, so I will go over the supports that we currently do have in our schools. To support students and staff during kind of these unsettling times. Counseling staff, district-wide, we have school psychologists, a school social worker and school counselors who are available to students. Either through I E P services, five oh four services, or just in general, um, when students need them or if staff think that students need some support. So those, uh, staff members are available all the time, we have a risk assessment that we have developed, um, with the help of a consulting psychologist, a clinical psychologist. And um, implementing this, it's a suicide risk assessment, uh, not only do all the counseling staff know how to administer this, the administration, administrator, administrators. At both, um, the high school and the center school are also trained in how to run through this, so if we needed to go through this, uh, we can do it. And this is used when we have knowledge of or we. Think that a child or student may have suicidal thoughts or may be in danger of suicide. Assessment that we put in place right away, it's not done in isolation, it's usually two or three staff members who are part of this whole process. And we can get information that leads us to a suicide risk assessment from either something that the student has said. Um, another student maybe has heard something. Uh, sometimes, uh, we've heard from parents who have seen things on social media, we also have talked to our, we went over the suicide risk assessment with staff. Also, it's probably time for a refresher, but our teachers are really, really good at picking things up and I have to send kudos out to the, the English teachers especially. Um, very often they'll pick something up in in a paper or a journal or reflection. That maybe just doesn't seem quite right or they're a little bit concerned about and they'll either reach out to a counselor or to one of the administrators, so we can. Talk to that student and have a, you know, a little discussion and see if we need to do a risk assessment, so. Um, in kind of identifying some of the red flags and we've, we've gone over the red flags with them and, um, they've been really, really helpful with that. We also have a threat assessment that we have developed, um, and this is conducted when we either have or receive knowledge of a threat. Or harm to somebody in the school or to the school in general, again, our counseling staff and administrators. Have had, um, some experience and some training on this and it is time because. We didn't really need it so much, but it's time now to relook at this plan and make sure that it's still what we need it to be, but we do have a plan in place if we get. Information that somebody has made a threat against either another individual or the school itself, some of the threats that you may be seeing right now. We just do the process, we don't, it's not a responsive kind of a, an assessment, we don't, you know, we, we may put it at school, just stay put if we needed to, but we. Um, activate other supports if we get to the point where we think other supports are needed. Information and endure the initial planning. Um, we also have securely, which we see on our, our computers and I believe teachers, the teachers have access to it, to Sarah? Yes, um, and so we also administrators have access to it and it, it comes across as an alert. And it, it says something like disturbing keywords found and it will list what the keyword is, like, for example, bomb threat and Beth Gold Snyder. Two o'clock, so it gives the information of what was said, what the keywords were and, um, you know, depending on what the words were that were found. Um, and who sees it, then, then it's acted upon, so if an administrator or teacher sees it, you know, we've had, um, a few things come across my desk. And I've called over to the high school, the center school and said, have you seen this? Um, that's just how I'm responding, I'm sure administrator responds a little bit differently, but I. Take action and make sure that somebody is responding. We then talk to the child or check things out to make sure that, um, you know, there's not anything that needs to happen or if we need to do a risk assessment or a threat assessment based on those. Alarming words, then we can certainly do that. Um, we also. Always have collaboration with parents, whenever there's a risk assessment or a social emotional need of a student, we contact parents, we work with the parents. Um, we can get state police involved, we have a great working relationship with our residency troopers and also. Responsible for whatever reasons, um, and other outside resources as well. Uh, we have a memorandum of understanding with two oh one mobile crisis, so if we are having a student who is in crisis, either, um, we might be doing a risk assessment. We might be doing a risk assessment, a suicide risk assessment, or even a threat assessment on the child. And if we need another set of eyes or need another expert to come in, we can call mobile crisis and they will come in with their evaluators and. Patient and kind of either collaborate with us and let us know we're on the right trap, or we should probably be thinking about something else to do for the child. They can also provide resources to families, outside counseling and, and other supports, so that's a great resource that, that we have. We've also recently had our student support services staff has participated in a webinar that focuses on fostering trauma sensitive practices in schools. So that is something that they've. Continue on going P D on some of trauma sensitive practices, which impact a lot of our kids. And then in both schools, we practice a variety of safety drills throughout the year, lockdowns, fire drills, tornado drills, a lot of things, just to make sure that. We are safe in a variety of, of settings. So those are the supports that we have. Some things that, what can families do? Reassure kids that they're safe and supported, listen to them, push their feelings. Make sure that kids are getting enough sleep, eat a balanced diet and exercise. These things will help kids, sometimes kids who are prone to anxiety, getting enough sleep, eating well and exercising will maybe help decrease some of that anxiety a little bit. So it's good to, to do that, have them exercise, get a little bit tired out. Be in communication with the school, if you notice things at home, changes in your, in your child, even sleep changes, things that are impacting their. Social emotion. Communicate with the school, call the principal or call the teacher, call the school nurse, and we can, you know, talk with you and either, you know. Check in with the child or offer some supports or resources. And also I think a really big thing is to monitor what your child is watching on T V and online. There are things, there are some really pretty awful things out there right now on Netflix and some of those things that young kids are watching that. Are in really influencing them that they should probably. So I think that that's a really key thing is just monitor what they're doing online, on T V and also social media. So those are things that, that can help at home as well. So we have a lot of things in place if there are any questions.
Any questions for Beth? Okay, hearing none, Mr. J R, thank you Beth, Mr. J R, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you. So two quick bullets, because we've already had a bunch of information about both schools tonight. But two very important ones, the Thanksgiving canned food drive, which recently wrapped up. A team of eighth graders, Olivia Bevins, Grace Osborne, Kelsey Perkins, Gabby Post and Kira Sullivan. Along with Mrs. Caruso and Mr. Lambert, organized and conducted a holiday canned food drive to collect non-perishable canned food items for the Bolton Community Food Pantry. Function with three pre-Thanksgiving school-wide spirit days, students were encouraged to bring in a canned food item. On those spirit days to participate. A school goal of eight hundred items was established, and then the final tally, the school had nine hundred and twenty food items for donation. Which earned the school an additional special school-wide spirit day, so exceeded, and I had no concept of how much nine hundred and twenty was. Until the other day, they were, they had it on a hand truck and they were rolling it out the front doors, it was pretty impressive. And there is school spirit in these tough times right now with what's going on in the world and COVID. It's very important to keep that school spirit up, and the B C S community is doing an amazing job. To work together to provide positive and uplifting, uplifting experiences for our students and families. The P T A, as we mentioned earlier, with the walkathon is just always involved in, in, in doing things for the school. And right now they're in the midst of a festival of snowmen event, and families who purchased a snowman to decorate will have it placed in front of the building. On Saturday, December eighteenth, families can stop by the school between, between ten and twelve for hot cocoa cookies and to vote on the different snowmen. I know Mrs. Safran has a couple herself that she is decorating with her kids. As a school, we have a school-wide virtual assembly plan for before break with fun games and activities. And I want to thank Mrs. Safran, who's doing an amazing job with the P B I S committee to organize these fun assemblies. Additionally, and this was in the works today, the staff is working on a fun winter theme. That we're gonna show students at that assembly, and we're gonna send it out to families before break, so it's a kind of a fun goofy. Video, and I'm sure the video is gonna bring some smiles and laughter, so we're excited to get that underway before the break.
Thank you, Mr. J R, any questions for Mr. J R?
I just wanna show, uh, cause I'm very close with one of the organizers of the festivals. An exam.
It's awesome.
Awesome.
That's awesome. So he sends me a picture of that the other day and asks me, where is mine? That is very cute. All right. Mr. Misselli, B H S update.
Thank you very much, I, I too have just a couple of quick items for everybody tonight. So last week was a long time in coming, and marked the first week of school this year, Bolton High School was. We welcome Mrs. Laura Goulet into our English department and Mrs. Stephanie Noheimer into our health P E department. And continuing my effort to do some public thanks every month, a huge thank you to English teachers, Mrs. Lynch, Mr. Dennis and Mrs. Moriarty. For their assistance with English classes while we waited for Mrs. Goulet to begin her tenure here at Bolton High. And also a huge thanks to our daily subs, Mr. Gilmore and Mrs. Bradley, who go way above what regular subs do, supervising students. Construction on track during a time when you have a teacher resign and the time that it takes to bring a quality candidate on board to school. As you may know, we had our N E A S and C, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, decennial visit in the fall of two thousand nineteen. So this fall, it was time for our two-year follow-up report, which was in October. And we, so we've gotten a response from that, and it was mainly a long list of accolades and a very short. Port on in another two years, this is pretty much the standard procedure for the first five years following a visit. And the items to work on the list are typically things that we have identified as a faculty of the stuff that we're working on improving. And then a final thanks to Ms. Sacco and Ms. Carvallo, our N E S chairs, who did the work of authoring that follow-up report, so thanks to them.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Misselli? All right, hearing none, that concludes my report this evening, Chair Broneal, thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, it doesn't appear that we have any of that this evening. So we'll move on to new business, and everyone should have received a proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Board of Education meeting schedule along with the agenda this evening. I don't know if we're gonna pull it up or discuss it at all, do we have any? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting schedule.
I make a motion.
Thanks, Ria.
Except the schedule.
I'll second, Sue.
Yes, Sue.
You read, so does anyone have any questions? And or input on our proposed meeting schedule? Hearing none, although the most, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Moving on to Board of Education Committee assignments. I have spoken with most of you about committees, and then since we have a largely returning cast of characters. It seemed that we are going to stick with our. Current assignments with the exception. Ria who will. Fill and slot on finance and also Diana. Who will join fully on finance and. I think we said. Transportation and. Maybe be the P T A liaison. We haven't had anyone who could fill the role of the P T A liaison, so. Diana had said she's, no one else is willing to do it, that she would do it. And we also have no one, since Chris stepped down from crack. And I believe we also have a person who said if no one is interested, that they would do it, which is Ria. Anyone else who is willing or more enthusiastic than. If no one else is able to do it for either crack or. The P T A liaison. Pretty sure the answer is probably no. So. Yeah, crack is a difficult one, I know, because it meets during the day and. P T A also, not during the day, but. Just if you're not doing it anyway, it's a hard one to get to, so I know, I think anyone who's willing to step into those roles. We have a schedule for that, which we will. Put into your inboxes and your email. In the next week.
You'll have it tonight.
So that's the, uh, we have resignations this evening.
We do, we have one resignation, and that is from Bolton Center School Technology Education and STEM Coordinator Teacher Steven Soudell. Wish him.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to textbook.
Good evening, I would, yeah, are we ready to move forward, sorry?
We have a first read on a textbook that we discussed earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, Miss Malonowski, thank you.
Malonowski about that.
Yep, thank you, thank you. As introduced by Sue earlier this evening, we would like to move forward. New U S history text for the high school, it is a required course. U S history interactive reconstruction to present, this is a new text published twenty twenty-two. Our last text was published in two thousand and eight. And we are sorely in need of copies, in COVID, we were able to make do with some online resources, et cetera, but now that we're in person. We would benefit from purchasing this text sooner than later. And if not, definitely next year, our class size really requires us to purchase more texts, and it does not make sense. To purchase an outdated text, so we, again, thank you. Echo and the history department for doing a very thorough investigation of multiple texts and presenting this to our board subcommittee.
Thank you, Sarah.
So just for our new members sake, generally for the approval of textbooks. Those get brought through the curriculum committee and then are introduced at. Board of Education meeting and then. Generally speaking, the public is invited to review this text, which I'm sure happens quite a bit. For the next month, and then we would approve it at our next meeting. Are we still having that as a process in COVID times, I guess?
Yes, yes, we are, and we ask that for.
Welcome to come and down to the B O E and read this book and find out if it's worth.
Yes, we, we are inviting the public in and.
Open that up for review for the next month and be voting on it next month, thank you very much.
We do ask that the public to make. For viewing the text during COVID times, so thank you.
Okay. What's? Okay, thanks, I was wondering if we had special instruction. Now we also have a first read on a number of policies.
So do you want me to go through just briefly?
These, sure, yeah, the changes, highlight substantive changes.
Okay, so I wasn't anticipating this, and Chris does it so well.
All right, I got it, all right.
Chris does do it very well.
All right, so the first one is our retention of electronic records, this has to be revised. Based on section one forty-seven of the June Special Session, which revised the definition of public records. Also clarifies that applies to all individuals granted access to the district's computer systems and or networks, and that are not only. Thirty-three hundred is revised to reflect revisions to Connecticut General Statute ten dash two forty-one C. Ten dash two forty-one D and ten dash two forty-one E. Also addresses revisions to federal laws to include definition of property and procurement of property under federal law. Five one one three is attendance truancy and chronic absenteeism. This is. Section nineteen of Public Act twenty-one dash forty-six. Which requires local and regional boards of ed to allow any student enrolled in K through twelve to take two non-consecutive days each school year as mental health wellness days. Section eighteen of the act, as amended by the June Special Session. Also revises definitions of excused and unexcused absences with regards to remote learning. There are further revised regulations that conform with section. Ten twenty-one dash one ninety-nine, which amends state law to raise from seventeen to eighteen. The age when a student may withdraw from high school, beginning in the school year commencing with July one of two thousand and twenty-three. At that point, a parent or person having control of a child who was seventeen years of age may withdraw the child from school. If the child is enrolled in an adult education program, if the parent personally appears at the district office and signs. Withdrawal and enrollment form. Five one three one point six, drug and alcohol use. Is a revision in light of section nineteen of the June Special Session, Public Act twenty-one dash one. Which revises Connecticut General Statutes ten dash two two one D to require that on or af- on or after January one, two thousand and twenty-two. That policies must conform with General Statute ten. Use, sale or possession of alcohol or controlled drugs by students on school property shall not result in a student facing greater discipline. Punishment or sanction for the use, sale or possession of cannabis than they would face for the use, sale or possession of alcohol. And then. What do I have next? Five one four one point three, these are. To comport with Public Act twenty-one dash six, which revised the religious exemption to the immunization requirements for school attendance. Next slide, please. Then six one four six point one is weighted grading calculation for grade point averages. This is also in response to Public Act twenty-one dash one ninety-nine, which. Connecticut General Statutes ten dash two twenty G. The board must have a policy concerning the manner in which students' grade point averages are calculated and must include whether grade point averages are weighted or not weighted. The act further expands that classes in progress, which grades may be weighted. Then we have five one three one point two truancy. Which is now addressed in. The five one four one point six. Is chemical health for student athletes, this is a new policy. I'm sorry, did I miss some? Okay, this policy. Am I okay, Sue, or not?
No, I think you missed the crisis prevention response.
I, I, I thought multiple pages, five one four one, okay, five one four one point six, the crisis prevention response. Is covered in fourteen twenty, school security and safety, so that policy itself is being. So that policy itself is being deleted and we are now using, going to use five one four one point six to be chemical health for student athletes, which is a new policy. This is a result of section nineteen of the June special session, which revises Connecticut general statutes ten dash to require that on or after January one, two thousand twenty two, policies adopted in conformity with Connecticut general statutes ten dash one five four A concerning the use, sale or possession of alcohol or controlled drugs by students shall not result in student facing greater discipline, punishment or sanction for use of cannabis than they would for sale otherwise. And then five one two six. Okay, I have multiple pages. This is new student privacy. This is in light of guidance issued by the United States Department of Education Student Privacy Policy Office. And the, to clarify, when administration must obtain prior written consent of a parent or student before administering, administering a student survey related to certain topics and when the administration must provide parents or students notice and an opportunity to opt out of participation. This statutory language. So that is it for first read of policies.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Andrew.
Oh. For our new member, I just wanted to say that so like textbook for policies, we receive them, we review them and consider them for a month and we'll be voting on them also next month in our second read. That is all for new business. Do we have any of the always exciting future business?
No, we do not.
I am not hearing it. So this time we will be looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's midyear evaluation and review of goals and invite the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Motion by Sue. Do we have a second? Thank you, Scott. Okay, thank you all. Mr. Misselli, will you close this out and turn the razor? Board members, please stay on. Good night, everybody. Thank you.